Plenipotentiary of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. If you're joining us for round two, welcome to hour three. Today is Monday, June 1, 2020. The time is 7:00 p.m. The meeting of the Greensburg City Council was called in order. At this time, please silence all your electronic devices. To comply with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, the city requests that participants in this meeting complete a voluntary anonymous survey that is available at the table on the back of the room. Brindo, would you please do a roll call?
Jim King.
Here.
Darryl Poling. Viada McKenzie.
Here.
Kevin Fleetwood.
Here.
Rick Ensler.
Here.
Okay. Minutes from May 4, 2020, which was a virtual meeting should have been distributed to you. Any corrections?
Make the motion with approval in a second.
Okay. All those in favor, signify with a sign of a "aye."
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Full business first of all. We have the fire pit ordinance 2020-4. This was brought up last month, and since then, we've ran into a couple of different items. One of those being the state's fire commission wants to review it. They told our fire inspector, Alan Campbell, that they would like a copy of that through our attorney's office. We sent it all, we sent it up there. They got back to us saying, you have to do, you have to have this in the final version, which is not what they told us the first time. So that's why it says recommendation to people. Chief Sturm and I were on an email chain today with Alan where he recommended that we pass a finalized version tonight, to which then we submit to them. They do have a meeting later this week of that commission, so we're hopeful that we can just simply amend our submission to them, and then we will get an answer back very quickly or unclear whether that will happen or not. Well, we did have an amendment last time that should have been reflected. So I didn't see it in the one that got emailed. I believe the edit was the authorized fire official to make sure we extinguished the fire that was on the ground.
You're going to add?
J.
I haven't added anything. Add that, and I'll make a motion to approve on the second reading, commending it. Commending it. Well, it was, you know, it was that, it was basically something like, "Fire can be extinguished based on the discretion of the fire department."
Yes, they're called.
And based on...
Smoke.
Oh, yeah.
Like, the hazmatics got the problem, and they called, and the fire department put it out. Just wording in there for that.
I think maybe we just, maybe based on the discretion of the fire department causing public issues.
Okay, what are the states?
The town. The state's kind, it just pushed under, you're on the second.
So B?
Yeah, it's covered if they get called, but it's still public, it's, it's not really spelled out.
That they may put it out? That the fire department may extinguish a fire?
It does what it does. Say a neighbor calls, he complains, and then with the "J" in there, they can have to actually check it out, put it out. And like, I don't have my wording on that.
I mean, E reads, "When burning creates or adds to a hazardous situation or required permit for burning was not obtained, the authorized fire official may order the extinguishment of fire."
What if you just after, just what about under E, if after "obtained," you added or for any other reason deemed appropriate by the authorized fire?
I just want to give the fire department a little more authority.
I like that.
Guys, it's on there, they can go.
I guess I'll revise my motion to approve it as amended in section E.
Yeah, right.
So we're going to approve the final reading without a, without a written amendment?
We're just adding that amendment to E. I'm going to give Chris the wording to be edited.
It was approved on the first reading with that amend, I know, but with that item E.
Yeah, but item E was in the first. And we didn't change anything in item E from the original that we wanted. There's no change.
What do you have? So E would read, "When burning creates or adds to a hazardous situation, comma, or a required permit for burning is not obtained, comma, or for any other reason deemed appropriate by the authorized fire officials, comma, the authorized fire official may order the extinguishment of the fire."
That sounds satisfactory. And I'll be very glad if I'm not going to put in a minimum of satisfactory.
My motion is to pass the secondary as amended based on what Chris said.
Okay. The, and if there's a second, the, there's not really a rush because that commission meets every month, which is fine. It's just going to slow us down. And that's okay too, but that's, that was the reason maybe for that.
We had a month or more to make it pass. In my past history, we've had issues in past years of proof stuff. And it never, and it never paid it to the final version, so.
So there is a motion. Somebody would like to second it or not, the motion would apply before. Nobody's taken up on that? Rick? Okay. Without a motion, we'll second it.
I'll drop my motion. Then can we, can we agree that with that added verbiage, we can we submit that to the state?
They're not going to take it without a, a, a.
No, the problem, the problem with, the problem with what you're dealing with on the, the building safety commission, the officials have, is there's, there's two parts of the statute. The first part of it says that you have to submit anything related to your fire safety ordinance within 30 days after final passage. The other thing says that you consider, you can submit it for preapproval before you do anything with it, and they'll give you an opinion on it. They still won't take any official action on it until after it's been finally approved.
So once we approve it, it's still, it's good? They're just going to review it?
Yeah.
And issues?
And I say, yeah.
It doesn't delay the process?
No.
Okay. Unless they have an issue.
Right. If they have an issue, then you have to come back and amend it again. So it's, it's... I'll be honest, I'm not 100% sure it falls completely under their purview anyway, but we submitted it because we should.
Absolutely.
And that, that's where the response that they came back with was, we'll approve this after it's finally done. So we can amend it, we can add that language, submit it to you all at your July meeting, and they meet shortly after when you guys do. They need all of them, obviously.
I'll make a motion to approve our fire department's situation.
Okay. All those in favor, signify with a sign of a "aye."
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Chief Bridges? Additional appropriations?
Yeah, this is the second reading for the additional appropriation for funds to pay off David Wilson, who retired earlier this year. So that's, it just needs a second approval for that to be dispersed from the public safety fund.
I'll make a motion we pass 23, 2020, 2021, 2022, 2023? Yeah, 2020-3 on the second reading.
Sorry. All those in favor, signify with a sign of a "aye."
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, sir. Court Judge Redwina has some information. I know we've been talking about this for a while, about how the COVID-19 has impacted or would impact city finances and what that looks like. So she has pulled up her court that does comparisons of the settlement amounts, and is just going to sort of briefly bring us up to speed on what that looks like.
I've been in contact with the county auditor's office, and we got our numbers for 2020 from the June settlement that will be placed in our bank account tomorrow. As you can see, we are down. We projected that we would be down 10%. We're only down, only 8.9%, but that means that we will probably be getting a larger amount with the fall of 2020 because people are still paying, I've been assured that the people are still paying their taxes on a, on a daily basis. So the property tax is down $348,658. License and F size is up, $19,467.60 for a difference of $320,618.98. This event, and TIF, the numbers are there for that. We are up on the TIF by 2 million. We have liens that, that we're down on, and we have the, excuse me, the PPE that it's down on. So do you have any questions? Thank you for your time.
Up next, Chief Bridges, your man.
Good evening. Including your packet is a request for an upgrade to our current watch guard system, which involves our body cams and our in-car cameras. The reason I'm coming from the board, or to the city council tonight, the border works has approved the purchase of these, I'm sorry, the upgrade. I am asking that I'm going to try to absorb as much as I can for this upgrade out of my budget for 2020, explain to the board works that it looks like right now, I'm not going to wood, my fuel budget is doing exceptionally well, so hopefully towards the end of the year, I can move money from the 200 series into the 400 series for this upgrade. Also helping out would be a thought, or a couple of vehicles that we had purchased earlier in this year came in a lot less than what I had predicted, so we should have money left over also in our vehicle maintenance, or I'm sorry, our vehicle purchase and equipment. So I'm asking that if I can absorb as much as the $15,000 coming on my budget, if necessary, the, if I can come back in front of the council later on in the year and ask for possibly maybe less, or $14,604 to make this project work. And I didn't know if anybody had any questions on the upgrades that we are looking at doing and why they are necessary.
Any comments, questions? Take a motion to approve echo the way. Okay? Second. Okay. All those in favor, signify with a sign of a "aye."
Aye. Kevin, did you make a motion?
Yes. Thank you, Dan. Thanks, sir. Tonight, we have Josh Dressler, who's our public safety IT guy. He's going to talk about public safety server and then some project updates, just a little bit about how the first few months of the job's been going and where we are in the stretch.
Good evening. Thank you. Just wanted to talk to everybody briefly. The last couple of months, we've been working on a project for public safety entities for the city, Greensburg and Decatur County, and looking at upgrades of our infrastructure. I don't want to go too technical on you guys, but all of the hardware and software that run all the public safety systems, whether it be the police department, fire department, sheriff's department, communications, equipment was purchased during the dispatch consolidation several years ago. Some of that equipment is nearing, nearing end of life, and we're kind of starting to run into issues with capacity and needing to upgrade a few things. Obviously, I've only been in, in this position for six months, but I've had quite a bit of history in working on, working with these entities and such. So what we've done is we've worked with Dell, put together a proposal to replace the equipment, upgrade our infrastructure, give us a lot more capacity and kind of flexibility for some projects that we're working on across all of the agencies. And obviously, I knew this was going to be, you know, quite a large ask, going to the various department heads in the advisory board, saying, hey, we're needing 185,000 unbudgeted dollars per se, if, you know, if we wanted to take this all in one bite. So we've worked with Dell, and they have put together a lease arrangement for us, that's a three-year lease with a dollar buyout with deferred payments starting in January of 2021. So it kind of gets, lets us go ahead and start the project today, which, like I said, we're in, in need of some upgrades. We have projects waiting today because we don't have capacity. This will allow us to basically start the project now. It defers any payments actually until 2021. So we had an advisory board meeting for all of the entities involved and discussed with them, you know, making sure that they have room in their budget and line items set aside to make these payments moving forward for three years. I knew it's going to kind of be difficult to come and ask for permission to spend extra money, but also 2022, 2023. So after talking with the advisory board, speaking with the commissioners, as well as all the department heads, this is kind of what we, we put together to kind of bring to you guys. I'm not sure as far as the technicality of a motion that's required for something like this, because we're not asking you to sign a document today. It's more of a, this is kind of our, our way of funding this project moving forward.
Chief Sturm or Chief Bridges, any problems or?
Just real quick on the purchase, I don't know next, like, the budget has not, we're not even at that yet. The way that I'm planning on absorbing the cost for the police and fire department, that will be 37,000, I believe, if your mom's around.
15,000 a year.
15,000 a year.
So you'd take 30,000?
30,000. So what I plan on doing, I thought next year, I would, the way that I do the rotation of vehicles, I thought that I was going to purchase four. Next year, next year, it looks like as mileage and maintenance, we're on that, purchase three. Since we have Chad that does our upgrades, or upkeep on our vehicles, they're in good shape and that, so instead of having to buy, or not hopefully have to buy a fourth car next year, I'll be able to absorb that part in the public safety through just not purchasing a car. So again, I know we're kind of skeptical on COVID, on, on what we're going to see next year for the budget, but we were, like I said, we were able to take one of my vehicles out to make sure that this project works, because again, it's something that we definitely need. So hopefully, say, we're on, on three next year, so if we worry about where the money might come from, that's worth it.
As well as from the fire department's standpoint, we're looking at, we'll be, we will be selling our old portable radios, as well as our air packs. With that money, planning to go back into the public safety fund to offset those costs, but since they're already paid for, basically, it's just going to be money in there that can be done, that. Josh has our, our full support for doing this project. When I came in, the fire department was technologically not advanced at all. We're running multiple systems. I have two screens to run two separate computers, which talk to each other, so trying to get work done efficiently does not work very well at all, or at all. And unfortunately, we cannot move forward without this project to kind of, for lack of a better term, clean up some of our technological issues at the fire department until we do have this server replaced.
And we also, Commissioner Navi is here this evening. Is there any comments on where the commissioners have sort of settled on this?
Yeah, Josh came today and visited with us, and we, as the commissioners, approved it pending you guys' approval of it to move forward, so not to presume what you guys would all do, but we, the county is on board with that, with our sheriff's department, 911, and EMA.
Thanks, sir. So what's the life expectancy of this?
What we built into the lease, you know, it's always difficult to say for capacity reasons. I typically try to stay on a four to five-year rotation. Some of the servers that, to be completely honest, the servers in, in production today were 20, 2007, 2008, 2012, and 2016, are all the hardware we have today, so they're well beyond what I would say a normal life expectancy is. I'm going to stick with, you know, my, my estimation, you know, short of some massive change to how we do, you know, day-to-day operation of equipment, this, this will probably be five years for us. The beauty, and again, I don't want to be too technical, I always get yelled at for being too technical about this type of system, is it's modular, so it's not a, we use it for three years, and oh, we're out of capacity, or this can't do what we need, we have to throw this away and buy a bigger one. This is the building blocks for the modular system. So say three years from now, we take on some new task that requires us to store all more data, we need to move, you know, more than just public safety into this, and this grows to, to something where the city and the county want to contribute for multiple offices, you can add additional nodes to this system to increase storage and increase workloads without necessarily throwing away and replacing. And kind of to echo the fire chief's comment, you know, he's in a position right now where the hardware they have is, is not sufficient for their needs. As I mentioned before, several of the other servers are very old, and we were looking at trying to replace them this year, and I kind of put a pause to that and said, I'd really like to take, you know, the seven or eight, $10,000 for all of these servers at multiple locations that need to be replaced, and focus that money, you know, into doing this as a consolidated and a, you know, single project. One of the things that initially we were looking at on this equipment, you know, everything is redundant from a physical location workload, half of this equipment would be housed with the police department, the other is housed at the communication center, and that's how the system today is currently set up. Additionally, a third device will be placed at ETC in their data center, and that's where all of our fiber between the buildings connects that acts as a backup device and what's called a witness to make sure that everything stays in sync. And that's, that's a big issue we have right now with the way our backups are working and the way the redundancy works today on the equipment. We have several outages lasting three to four hours overnight due to the redundancy not working as expected and waiting on a third-party vendor, you know, to get a tech to route and get us on the phone. So part of this, you know, like I said, will replace some hardware that was needing to be replaced anyway. We also are able to terminate a third-party contract for support of the existing hardware today. That contract is paid through 2020, so that will continue, and obviously, we needed to continue to pay it this year while we still have, you know, the legacy equipment. So there will be some cost savings there. I know Director Free from Communications was kind of looking at, at the cost savings and kind of how she would justify it out of her budget, and she would make this outline, and it will go away to focus the funds towards this.
So which way are you guys looking to go? 185 or 210,000?
So the 185, 479 is the third block. Can I apologize? I should have highlighted that before I sent the document out.
You're going to do the, you're going to the 185, 40, 36, 146?
Correct.
What's the difference in the 24, Decatur, 44, E, 40, 400, 24, CDU, and the 40, 400, 36?
So the 24 versus the 36 number, that is the third device that goes to ETC for the backup, and that's actually a storage capacity number. So we're purchasing 24 terabytes of, of storage. The nice thing about that system as well is it actually comes with 96 terabytes of capacity in it. So say a couple of years down the road, we decide we need more storage or want to keep things longer, it's a license upgrade, a fee, of course, and a license upgrade to add additional storage. So we looked at the 24 was sufficient for, you know, our three-year, what we're doing today as far as backup and recovery, but it also gets us the physical piece of equipment that we can bump up if we need it in the future.
25, 36?
Correct. It comes down to roughly $15,000, $15,500 per public safety entity per year. So 15,000 for the police department, sheriff's department, fire departments, and communications. So it's split 50/50 between city and county. That's just kind of breakdown for their yearly.
And those are the only four on there, right? There's no EMS, because that is a separate thing of hospital?
Correct. Yeah, today, the, I mean, the system itself covers all public safety, all the volunteer fire, but as it's structured today, the city and the county split those costs equally to provide the system, because there's many, of course, you know, there's a few handful of people that access, thanks for the store on this, that are not a contributing member, that's capital departments currently structured today.
So you're looking for commitment from this board to not cut that funding in 2021, 2 or 3, right?
Correct. Yeah, I, I was trying to find a polite way to say, I, I'm not necessarily asking you permission to spend money that we don't have yet. I'm asking that you be aware and be, you know, a part of the solution, because ultimately, you know, it is your decision in the coming years. I don't have the number to ask you today, you know, cut me a check for this, so just wanted to keep you guys apprised and obviously answering any of the questions you have.
Do we need any further?
Well, given that the, given that the commissioners made their approval contingent upon some level of approval from this entity, I, I would think you would need some level of approval. I mean, I don't know.
Motion to support?
Yeah, motion or vote of confidence? Motion for vote of confidence?
Okay. Vote of confidence to proceed with the purchase orders and all those related funding over the next three years? Is there a second? All those in favor, signify with a sign of a "aye."
Aye.
Opposed? Both? Okay. Second thing, we hope that, or I hope that you could share with the board a little bit, of course, we contribute to half of your position, that it would be good to get sort of a mid-year update on what the first piece has been looked like, what you're currently working on, and additional, what we just talked about, and where you hope to see us go right into the year.
Yes, kind of as I mentioned earlier, I'm just over six months in the position full time. Definitely has been kind of a, a learning curve, being a consultant for around 16 years between both the city and county entities, you know, working on fires and picking up, you know, kind of the break-fix model. It's been kind of a challenge getting things kind of put together and trying to standardize. It's, it's actually going really well. I do have some issues on how to prioritize some of these projects that are, you know, day-to-day break-fix versus long-term. For example, we just implemented a new ticketing system to help me track my time and track requests from the various department heads. Initially, we had opened this up, and as I started adding users, by the time you add all of the police officers, fire department personnel, sheriff's department, jailer, communications, there were like 127 people that could create a ticket and send it to me, and determined very quickly that that's just not feasible. I could not get anything done with, with that many people, you know, sending you requests. So what we've done in, in the new system is kind of structured it to command staff or department heads, division heads within each of the departments to submit tickets to work on. Our new system has some service-level agreements that I've built in to try to kind of help, you know, keep me accountable, keep everybody on the same page as far as what we're doing. Kind of the numbers I'm targeting for are, you know, first response, replying back saying, hey, I've got this, here's what we can do to look at within eight business hours. Typically, you know, I can do that a lot quicker, it depends, you know, maybe a day of meetings, kind of a day with resolution within 48 hours. But I thought that was a pretty good metric to kind of set for myself in looking at day-to-day tasks. I've already learned in the first 15 days of using the new system, you know, I put in 32 tickets of things to work on, because there's such a backlog, you know, all of the years, and, but hey, we've got a first one now, let's try to get all these things done. Obviously, I can't get 32 projects done in two days, so kind of working through a way to structure that so that I can provide a quarterly report of, we've had these many tickets, broken down by agency, here's how quickly we were able to resolve them, but also keep the long-term projects kind of in a separate queue, because obviously, you can't see any kind of metric based on time when you've got projects that may take six weeks or six months. So that's something I'm working on as far as kind of the management, the structure of all of that. And briefly, I don't, don't want to take a ton of time, but a lot of the projects that we've been working on have been laptop replacements, just physical hardware upgrades. The last two months, a lot of my time has been focused on this lease that we just discussed, the server upgrades. The chief stormer has the issue you mentioned, two screens that are two different computers because they're working on two different platforms, and part of resolving the fire department troubles that they're having, you know, rest on this new equipment. And part of resolving the Fire Department troubles that they're having, you know, rests on this new equipment. Obviously, COVID-19 has affected how we work in both public safety sides. Fortunately for us, we've kind of always had a work-from-home motto. If you look at how the police officers and Fire Departments and Sheriff's Agencies work with their laptops in cars, it's basically a constant work-from-home. So we were able to adapt pretty quickly to that and keep things running. We did upgrade the phone system for the Communications Center and the jail staff, which has been very beneficial during COVID. Been able to have the Sheriff's Department admin staff work from home and field calls just as if they were at their desk, somebody picks up the phone in the lobby and they're actually talking to them home. So that's gone pretty well. Pretty much just continually working with the department heads on and trying to plan future projects. I know we're going to be getting busy here with trying to determine extra budgets and see how things work, so.
Any questions, Mr. Josh? Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, we have Washington Township Christian Rust. He has been having a conversation with his board about the building that we, the city owns on South Franklin Street, some of you may recall it's a shell that the backup fell out that we took possession of years and years and years ago. It doesn't have an electric panel, it doesn't even have a sewer connection line. So it's just been sitting empty. So he is here to discuss some options that he's interested in with all of you.
Yes, I've, thank you. As Joshua was saying, we've spoken with my board and we're wondering if the city was interested in getting rid of that building at 112 South Franklin.
It is with that? So I guess part of the question too is, you know, are you interested in getting rid of it? If yes, what are your, would you like further to be, an appraisal done? Do you want us to gift it to the trustee's office? What's your, you want to use it as an office?
Yes, we would use it as our office, a permanent office space that Township owns. And then hopefully we'd be able to adapt that space. Have you, very familiar with the building you're talking about?
It's a portion of, it's a portion of the larger building.
It's directly behind, yeah.
Yeah. Could you see that to adjust, you stick out?
Yes.
Over my cell, building or something here.
Yeah, I mean, it is, I mean, it is very, it's very rough. And I think the city put a roof on it when the backup had fell off. The back is a laid brick, or laid block wall. Perfect, we can show it to you if you want.
Didn't the city try to do something a couple of years ago with that?
Wow. I think we put a, what was it, unsafe building on it, right? And we ended up, you know, part of it down or something.
Not like try to stop.
Or something. They abandoned it.
I was gonna say, it was acquired by the city through the unsafe building process. The original owner of the place that is now the sushi place, back when it was a tiki bar, had kind of acquired it under the idea that they were eventually going to expand in that direction, and then the wheels kind of fell off of that, so then that building became just sort of this vacant thing. I think at least the last time around that I was the city attorney, all it was really doing was kind of, you know, patch job here or there just to make sure that it wasn't going to kill anybody. And then I think at one point, they looked into the feasibility of potentially selling it, and I don't know that it has a huge market value due to the amount of work that you're going to have to put into it. And Ron may be able to say more.
That property, that property was appraised about five years ago, and that was after the roof repairs and the rear or easterly wall repair. I won't have the exact numbers in my head, but it seemed like one of the appraisals was seventeen thousand and the other was eighteen thousand, like I said, five-ish years ago.
I will add that the roof that he's talking about being put on is leaking at this point. It's worthless, basically. I'm taking care of the problem for you, Kevin. It's a liability to the city.
Well, do you have, do you have those mechanics in place that are ready with it?
It's going to be my office.
Okay.
It's, uh, it's, yeah, it's maybe like.
It's just a one-story?
Two-story.
Yeah, two-story. And then by the time you figure you put in bathrooms and everything to where it needs to be, you know, you eat up most of the first floor and where you put an HVAC and plumbing and electric and things like that, it's going to be a very small space for that building area, so. We would do a bomb, yeah. But my board sent me to see if you were interested in getting rid of the building and what price you had in mind. And then we will take a look at what it would cost, what the cost will be to get it up to date and get it via an office and possibly.
As much as I like for the city to have property, and you'll see going forward that that's something I'm interested in, how do we help facilitate development? I think the building is going to take a lot to push it into something that is usable. His entity is not a tax-paying entity, so it's not going to come on the tax rolls if we did something private-wise with it. But I, I mean, I've walked through it once or twice, and it's in, I mean, I'm not even sure for lack of better terms, and no offense, we could even give him money. Just because I'm not sure that there's enough space for something to be economically viable. For example, parking, I think the parking that's behind it is owned by the businesses that face Main Street.
And most of my, I'm a person that doesn't like the idea of putting something right on the square that's going to close at five o'clock every day. I'd rather have things right downtown in the square that are open after hours, attracting people, you know, helping revitalize downtown. This is just a few, you know, as you know, just a few hundred feet off of the downtown square. It would kind of help, you know, make that area a little bit nicer. And then hopefully, a lot of the benefit of being downtown for my clientele is that a lot of them walk to me as it is. And so it's kind of a benefit for them to be able to come downtown and take care of any other services they may need. Then we have an attorney downtown or need to go to the courthouse downtown, so it's kind of a benefit.
I would also note that it would put the trustee's office here for the lower rents, lower income housing entities that exist there, which, you know, given the trustee's role, would be beneficial to them.
Is there a desire to get a courthouse for your office? Uh, the, we were actually, we were allowed to be in the courthouse as a temporary location. We moved out of our prior office, and so with kind of the understanding that we'd be moving along from my, it's up there. Temporary, temp- temporary.
We're not throwing you out.
Yeah, right.
No, the building's set there anyhow. We're not, we're not getting anything out of that, we're not doing anything with that.
I'm of the opinion.
I wouldn't have a problem if somebody could use it, get it off art.
We acquired it because they had picked it up.
It was an unsafe building. Yeah, so it wasn't a tax, it wasn't a tax situation. It was a, the city, the prior city engineer before Mr. May had gone through and identified it as an unsafe building. They were given also, the owners were given multiple opportunities to do process to fix it, they didn't. So pursuant to statute, we filed to acquire it. So it wasn't a tax issue.
What was it, what do I want you to spend on?
A one. A one.
Thirty. Thirty. We got thirty because I think we got half, a portion of that paid by the Indian landlords.
Jeff can kind of figure it too because the owner of that was the same as the owner of the parts that he needed where his plant was built.
My office building. My office building is built.
Query hole and all that.
Query hole. It was kind of a deal that the city would take that building because it was unsafe, but she would give us the query hole and build the lots where the my office building sits. So to reimburse the city, the utility bought the lots.
Thirty thousand?
Yeah.
Thirty thousand dollars.
Thirty thousand dollars.
And I spent it on a building that you're wanting to give away.
And we built our office building up there.
So we'll take fifteen?
No, I would go the other way. If they want that building, they can take the query.
The previous mayor, they had a buyer.
Also, I mean, I guess the answer is maybe you don't really know, we can maybe go find out if that's something that's of interest or can you tell us how you'd like for us to proceed or what you'd like to see?
How long has it been since we, when was the last time you actually invested money in the office?
Over five years. Five years.
That doesn't, that building's, that building's never been moved. They don't do something, but they do much of it. If there's not going to be.
Well, I can see why people revolt about giving something, just giving it away. But then again, if you're going to invest monthly money in something and let it sit and do nothing for five years, then you didn't really take into consideration the money that you invested in to begin, that you didn't take care of what you had.
Yeah, and if we're not, and I think if the city's not willing to probably invest in getting it to a sellable condition, then we're probably going to just end up with a few of that. We're not going to get the money we spent in it back from the private. And that money's going to go, not that it doesn't matter.
I don't have a problem.
Jimmy, did you make a, you didn't make a motion that you, you just said you were.
I was trying to let everybody kind of have their say what they felt.
I invite you, so nobody ever cares. You're going to do a lot, I mean, the optics of giving it to another local agency, the benefits to the city.
Exactly.
What do you think, Kevin?
You'd do something for dollars then?
Do that. I mean, there's, and I will be honest, I have not looked specifically at the rules recently, but the normal sale of real estate, the normal hoops that you have to jump through to sell real estate or to dispose of real estate don't apply when you're giving it to another state agency, another entity. So you don't have to necessarily go through the appraisal process and get two appraisals and do all of that. If all you're doing is giving it from one, you know, from one municipality to another municipality, municipality, so you don't have to do that. So I think you could just give it away. I think you could also sell it for a dollar, or you could also sell it for fifty cents more.
It's all for nine, five years, correct? We had our opportunity to do something with it, like how many years ago, whenever we put the money off, put the roof on it, we didn't have anything with it, so shame on us.
I guess probably make a motion and then we give it to them. If we want to put it in a kind of condition that, you know, it's like, we don't want that coming back.
We don't want.
We don't. We don't want that.
We don't want that.
Motion to give, to give the ability to Washington to Washington.
It's worth it now, yes.
And give it on the motion. Chris represents both the city and the township, so we can just take your partnership with the bill for Chris's legal fees to help us with that. Okay.
Your comments.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Cost anything you would.
Kevin, second. All those in favor of giving the building to the Washington Township trustee with all legal fees being directed to turn the scheme? Say a five, say a aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? There you go. Congratulations.
Who listens second?
Good luck with that.
Yes.
Okay, now.
Are you issued an unsafe building warrant?
I'm going to call Sarah Wayne. Brian Robbins, EDC Director, about a GCOM tax abatement. Good evening.
Good evening, I'm here. It's worth it, while you do wear a mask, put in a breath mint before you do it. And then it's kind of torture right there. The, okay, sorry. Resolution, we went over this at the last meeting. Just to recap, GCOM was granted a tax abatement back in 2017 in April, and it was to be a three-phase abatement. And an abatement for 2017, which is 2017 dash four, which will be entered in, in paragraph three here, was, is all up on the up and up, and the CF ones are completed, the 2018 dash fours are also, the SP one was submitted, and the CF one is also complete. What they failed to do last year is file 2018 SP one. So what we're doing now is passing a waiver of non-compliance, handwritten by Chris Steven, crafted.
It's got a type two.
Okay. And what that will do is allow them to receive credit for that abatement in 2019. However, the Tax Abatement Committee felt because they had not originally applied on the SP one at the time, there should be some sort of penalty, and they changed it from a five-year abatement, which is originally what was agreed to, to a four-year abatement. GCOM is okay with that, and so if that's what this waiver of non-compliance, I don't know what resolution it would be.
Number ten.
Okay, resolution. Twenty twenty dash ten, that's what we will be passing here. So we need, as I understand, approval, not only resolution number twenty twenty dash ten, but also do you retro your SP ones for the taxes since it would be last year? Would you go ahead and do twenty twenty dash ten for the SP one? That would be my question.
The industry's been following forms.
Yeah, and you guys all should have gotten a copy of the SP one. And I would assume because they've submitted it now, it would be twenty twenty?
Yes.
Okay. Because they, even though it counts towards starting retroactive in nineteen?
Right, even though it goes back to nineteen, that would be the twenty or twenty-four.
Okay.
But what do they have filed with forms?
They have, actually, everybody should have gotten a copy of that.
I don't know. When I wrote it, I didn't know if they filed them or not.
Yeah, they, uh.
Yeah, the SP ones are the most dumb ones.
In the last, in the last meeting, everybody should have gotten a copy of the SP one. It's a, just to recap, it's a six-point-two million dollar investment with two-hundred thousand dollars of lead and equipment there.
So you just need a motion for twenty twenty dash ten?
Should we do the resolution and the abatement together or separate?
I would do them together.
Okay. Okay, so twenty twenty dash ten.
All those in favor, say a five or say a aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Yes, sir?
Thank you.
Brian, are you headed out?
I don't have to.
Can you talk about the voted indicative type? Can you talk about the voting to the gate or kind of just a few minutes?
Well, yeah, I'll see if I can, thanks.
Okay, up next, we have Tara of ARA, and she's here. So we've talked about some of our great administration pieces that we have ongoing with our OPR grant. Do you want to fill everybody out on where we are with that, sort of maybe from a little bit from the beginning?
Yeah, so Office of Community and Rural Affairs was able to offer some COVID-19 immediate response funds to communities across the state. The only ones that Greensburg was able to apply for was either the loans or grants for small businesses because we had to meet a federal need. And the federal need that this county and city meets is the 51% low to moderate income employees. So we originally applied for grant funding for loans to give to small businesses. And then everything was moving really, really fast. And as Mayor Marsh said earlier in the evening, it has changed sometimes by the hour, not by the day or the week. After we were awarded the grant funding for the city of Greensburg, they decided that it's going to be a lot easier for the whole processing of everything to actually give grants to the small businesses instead of loans. And so with work with Mayor Marsh and Brian Robbins, we.